Let's call this meeting, a Fairfield County Council meeting, to order, please. And first of all, I would like a motion to amend the agenda to honor the Richard Wynn girls' basketball team before we actually do anything else.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose likewise? All right. At this time, we would like to have Coach Jason Hawtawanga come up and tell us a little bit about the Richard Wynn baseball, I mean basketball team, girls' basketball. You know, my mind knows baseball if y'all don't know that. But basketball, in the last week or so, they were a three-peat-er. Three straight years, they have been state championships. So I just think that is a feat in itself. Y'all are fortunate to have accomplished that, and we look forward to shaking your hands tonight and wishing you well. Coach?
First of all, thanks for having us here, and appreciate the invite to be honored. These girls deserve to be honored. A little bit about their history. If you look at the senior class, we have Emily Briggman. Do you want them to come up, as we call them?
That'll be great.
As we call them up, we'll go from senior down. We got Emily Briggman, who's a senior that we're gonna miss tremendously. Jessie Stidham's a senior that we also will miss tremendously. And Cassidy Branham will be really missed as well as a senior. That's our senior class. The statistics for these girls from middle school to varsity, they got three middle school championships. They've played in the state championship every year from ninth grade on, and they lost their freshman year. That's a sore, sore subject for us. But they are 165 and 5 in their career. And that doesn't, that isn't just in skeetza, private schools. We go out and schedule teams as well. Some public schools that we play, these girls have taken on, Union High School was in the top five in 3A and beat them. Locally Fairfield Central was one, number one team in the state last year, and they came to our tournament, and we were able to beat them. On and on, it's not just, are they doing this in small, private school ball? But whatever team comes their way, they're able to rise up and play. As a junior, we have J.C. Johnson, who's a big post presence for us. So far, while they're up there, Emily Briggman was selected all-region and played in the North-South All-Star Game. Jessie was selected all-region, also selected to play the Georgia-South Carolina All-Star J.C. was selected conference, region player of the year. She'll be the, she got all-state tournament team, and Jessie did as well, the all-star, all-state tournament team. And J.C. also made the North-South All-Star Game. Going down from there, we have our, she's our only junior, but I'll take one of her, I promise you that. Our sophomores, we have Bailey Taylor, who is a very good, brings a toughness to our team, an edge to our team, a real outside threat for us as well. Plays, plays real good defense for us as well. Alyssa Ackerson's our point guard. She handles the ball for us. I won't say she's leading the state in assists and steals. And J.C. was leading the state in scoring, and up there in rebounding and block shots as well. Then our, that takes us to our freshman class. We have Sally Constantbader, who's a ball of energy for us that she brings to the team. We got Kimmy Albert, who will, I promise you, she'll run through that wall for you. We have to rein her in. She's the quickest foul-out, she holds the quickest foul-out. She's tough, man, I'm telling you. Callie Thigpen, who brings some good defense and outside shooting for us. Lydia Wilder, who's a post-present, who's, who's learning the game and gonna give us some good time in the future. And we brought up, we got Cassie McCown, who's a post for us as well, as a freshman. And then we brought two eighth graders from the middle school along with us. Hannah Gibbons, who's a very good ball handler, is gonna be a great point guard for us. And we have Callie Caldwell, who also is a post player for us. These girls, they, they don't just, we have a motto, and I don't really care if I offend people at all, "We play unto the Lord." That's our motto. He, he created the game of basketball. He created our bodies. He created everything. And the way we approach the court is, if he went through all that for us, and when he's sacrificing for us, and getting beat down, and never gives up, and if he's unselfish to wash somebody's feet, can we not be a teammate that sacrifices ourselves for the greater good of the team? So when we approach the court, it truly and truly is not about, do we win the game on the scoreboard? When we approach the court, it's about, do we win the game by playing as hard as we can, possession by possession, bringing glory to the God that created us? And as we do that, our focus shifts off, did I make a mistake? Oh, my God, it's playing unto Him. And I really believe that's why these girls have had so much success, 'cause they buy into that. They don't ask about these stats. I just told you, not one of them has asked about any of those stats. They don't ask to see the book, how many points they scored. They could care less. They know it's the Eagles about to bring something to you. It's not about one person scoring and one person having the most points. It's about playing for the God who created us, and that is what brought this team the success they've had. It's a pleasure getting to coach them. Not only do they go undefeated this year, 28-0, but like I said, they did it the right way. They do, they, they're ultimate sports. We had some adversity this season with illnesses. Our point guard, Alyssa, got illness that took her out for about a month. We had Jessie Stidham, who's been on post all her life, worked in the gym over the summer, developed her guard game, and we're thankful for that because she was able to play point guard during that month to help get, get us to where Alyssa got back healthy. And then by the tournament, we were ready to rock and roll. But yeah, these girls deserve all the credit in the world. They, they put in a lot of time, hours in the weight room, in the gym, individual time in the summer. They've sacrificed, and it's proven. We are, another motto is, you cannot be victorious in life without a sacrifice. Our God sacrificed it all, and He got a victory, and that's what we model. They put in the sacrifice, and the, and the result is victories for them. So it's a joy to, to coach them. Anything else y'all wanna know, ask questions, I'll, I'll be glad to tell you about them.
Congratulations.
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 How you doing?
Good. Congratulations.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
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 Congratulations, okay?
Yeah, that's okay.
Congratulations.
Up and coming, state champs.
Y'all get to rock and roll.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Carol and Demla.
James.
It's okay.
Start today.
We had all these.
Yes.
We had five things.
I wanted to mention this right quick. The reason they're all in their shooting shirts and sweatpants and jeans, all but three of these girls play softball, and they just got out of practice 10 minutes ago before this started. So we were all, all looked like a team, not with just three dressed up and the rest coming sweaty and nasty from softball. So we all sacrificing, wore the same thing. I also heard that the first Richard Wynn basketball girls' coach might be in the house tonight. Is that true? I think, I believe so. The first girls' basketball coach at Richard Wynn. And then, uh...
We have Bobson, that's all I can say.
I never didn't win anything.
Ms. Kaufman, would you like to come up and have a picture with these girls?
Pardon?
No.
Now, she came and said, "Don't you wanna go with me?" And I said, "No."
And I believe, it's just, that's your mother? I believe this is the first, one of the first inductees in the Richard Wynn Hall of Fame.
Shit, it is.
Coach?
You want up here?
I'm sure that's the first.
One, two, three. All right, I'm gonna take one more. One, two, three.
Coach Hawtawanga, are any of your seniors going to play basketball in college?
We're trying to get, Jessie is going to Newberry College. We're not, we don't know if she is or not. Emily is going to USC. And, what are you gonna study there? To be a nurse? And then, I think Jessie's going to Newberry College to be a kindergarten teacher and a basketball coach. And Cassidy is going to Anderson to be something in medicine, a physical therapist.
Okay, if we can go back to the... Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Agenda now. Do I have an approval of the agenda? A motion? All in favor? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And as soon as the chamber clears, we'll have invocation by Mr. Robinson.
Please bow your head, as we pray. Dear God, thank you for this beautiful day that you provided us. Thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening to conduct the business of Fairfield County. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with kindness and self-control. Guide us council members to be the leaders our citizens need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, please provide traveling graces to all as we return to our homes this evening. We have such in your blessed name. Amen.
And we have approval of the minutes for our regular meeting, February 23.
Madam Chair.
Any additions or corrections? All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right. So we have, were there any others in the back room that needed to come in? Okay, at this time, we're pleased to have with us tonight Central South Carolina Alliance. Fairfield County has been aligned with them for 25 years. We were in the initiation, our original group that helped form this alliance to have industry and economic development for Fairfield County. And tonight, we have Mr. Mike Briggs, Ms. Melissa Mims, Ms. Tracy McMillan, and Mr. David King with us, and they're going to give us an update of the program and what they have going on for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and distinguished members of council. It's an honor for us to be here this evening. For the next few minutes, I'd like to spend a little time giving you an update on kind of where we've been, and give you a little bit of a view on where, where we think we're going. As, as Ms. Robinson mentioned, I do have with me David King, who's the Vice President of Marketing, Tracy McMillan, who's Vice President of Operations, and Melissa Mims, who is Director of Investor and Public Relations. And I have the control thing in my pocket, I forgot where I put it for a minute. They usually don't let me operate this much technology. We are a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation. We were incorporated 20 years ago, and as Ms. Robinson mentioned, we, this partnership is, is long and strong. We have been at this for 25 years, and we were one of the original four counties who came into this organization along with the city of Columbia. Today, we represent nine counties in the center part of the state of South Carolina, as well as the city of Columbia. Together with our allies, we worked with companies in that 20 years who have committed to invest nearly $10.3 billion and create some 63,000 jobs. So it's been a good run. There are four areas that we are involved in. We are the oldest alliance in the state, we're the fullest service, and by that I mean we do more things than other alliances out there. Many of them grew up as marketing alliances, for obvious reasons. We do marketing and recruitment all around the world for our partners. We also do project management. We are working constantly with Tiffany in, in all the projects that are looking here. We've been involved in helping in any way we need to help. Everything from, from stepping in when we needed to, to, to do itineraries, to do economic impact analysis, to help with incentive analysis and negotiation, and all of those kinds of things. We have a research department, a full research department that responds to RFIs with Tiffany's help on behalf of, of the county. We do labor market analysis and community profiles, cost of doing business comparisons, and so on. Also, we do economic development consulting. We help with product development, which is something we all need to stay very, very closely attuned to, and I'll talk about that in a moment. We advise on ED issues, economic development issues and trends, and also we work to, to help resolve problems however they may arise and wherever they may arise. From 1994 to 2014, together with Fairfield County, we have worked with companies that have committed to announce $264 million and create 3,000 jobs, half-new and half-expansions. In 2014, announcements in Fairfield County were 21,700,000 and 297 jobs, and you can see on the bottom right, names that you'll recognize that we talked about last year, Beaumont, Inora, and Edraw. 25 submissions, the county was submitted 25 times in 2014 to prospective clients, and 13 extensive RFIs were responded to. And quite frankly, some of those projects are still out there kicking around and considering Fairfield County. As we sit here today, there are still active 10 projects out there considering Fairfield County as a location, and that will continue as we move forward. It's a busy time for us. From 1994 to 2014, regionally, as I mentioned, $10.3 billion and about 63,000 jobs. Thirty-eight percent of that was new industry, industry that's new to the area. 62% is expansions. That's a little different, quite frankly, than the state average over the long term. Typically, about 80% of the investment in the state over the long term is, is 80%, is from existing industries who are expanding, investing more dollars and creating more jobs. The last four years in the region, we have worked with companies, and you can see how they broke down 94 located projects, 64 expansions, 30 new foreign and domestic. We have a strong component of foreign investment here, and we will continue, again, I'll talk about that in a minute, about $2 billion and 10,000 jobs over the last four years. From a marketing standpoint, we have a regeneration firm up in New Jersey who is calling all around North America in the Eurozones on our behalf, six hours a day, scheduling conference calls with us, meetings with these companies, companies who are growth candidates, who will be needing a place to expand in the future. We've had some 740 information requests fulfilled. We have had hundreds and hundreds of conference calls with these folks over the last four or five years, and we have had visits both in their offices and here. So this is something that we continue to work to contact directly companies who are out there in the private sector. Over the last year, we have traveled about 100,000 miles, not me, but all of us together and the folks who went with us. You can see on the left, we were in England, Italy, Austria, Switzerland, France, Germany, and Spain. We took a group of 17 people to Europe back in October, and we went into Madrid, Spain. We were hosted at the Ambassador's Residence, where the U.S. Commercial Service helped us bring in about 120 companies to meet us, to hear about doing business in South Carolina. And they came, some of them from 200 miles away, to talk to us. Next morning, we did a seminar on doing business in South Carolina and Central South Carolina at the Chamber of Commerce with another 60 companies. We've had three or four visits already from this trip, and they will continue. Fifty-nine companies last year actually visited our region, looking for a location. Couple pictures of the European marketing mission. You can see the Chamber of Commerce meeting up in the top left. We also had, at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, Clemente Gonzalez Soler, who owns a company in Clarendon County called Alucol. He is the group, he is the CEO of Group Alberico. He actually did a testimony on coming here, locating here, and doing business in this part of the country. There are a few, this is a, this is a chart that kind of gives you an idea of the pretty robust rest of the year we have scheduled from a marketing mission standpoint. All of these kinds of things will require us to go somewhere, or require some of us to go somewhere, taking the message of Central South Carolina around the United States and around the world. We undertook this year several initiatives as a part of our partnership to add on to some of the initiatives we've had ongoing for a while. You may remember that we have a, an inventory building loan fund that is revolving for our members, and you folks have availed yourself of that on two separate occasions to help get spec buildings built. The building that is now out there that is getting an awful lot of looks, by the way, we are, have some money in that. In addition to that, this year, we undertook hiring a photographer, putting him up in the air, flying the entire region to take aerial pictures. And this first aerial picture you can see is the Walter Brown Industrial Park, and the second one is a close-up shot of the new spec building. So we have more of these, okay? And we are in the process of processing them, and once we get that done, we will hand them over to Tiffany and her colleagues out there to do what needs to be done with them, to make sure we've got this. We've not had a collection of aerial photography in many, many years. It's been kind of a, take it when you need it kind of a thing. But we had the ability to do this this year, and we've done it, made it available to everybody. Another thing that we are undertaking this year is putting together what we call Economic Development 101, and we'll be holding that down in our offices before June sometime. And we'll invite everybody in the region who is on council to come in, where we will go through economic development, what's required, the kind of moving pieces, and all the rest of those kinds of things. But more of that coming. In addition to that, we have undergone the giving grants to our member counties for marketing. Quite frankly, we have made $7,500 available to each of the counties to do marketing-type efforts, and that's been something that most folks have been able to use and use very profitably. Couple of things I want to talk to you about in kind of conclusion. We are on the cusp of a manufacturing boom again in this country. We have had a lot of things going on with, jobs have gone outside the U.S. We're seeing jobs come back into the U.S., and you folks have been the recipient in some of those initiatives. But one thing that we, that kind of escapes us, I think, a lot of times, is we are the energy leader in the world today. This first chart is a chart of natural gas pricing in Germany, France, Italy, the United Kingdom, and Japan. We were in Germany, France, and Italy back in October, and I'm here to tell you, this is real, the people are talking about it. The other major manufacturing economies, natural gas prices are 2.6 to 3.8 times higher than they are in the U.S. And if you're manufacturing, that is huge, absolutely huge. So we're gonna see people come here who are big energy users. Electricity is very much the same story, about 1.6 to 3.9 times higher than the United States on average. Labor is not very different, to be honest with you. The cost of labor in Europe, and I heard it over and over and over, and I know my colleagues who were with me heard it, that it's very hard to manufacture in Europe profitably today. The costs have escalated, the energy costs are up, the labor costs are up, and so on and so on and so on. So we tend to be 1.2 to 1.6 times lower in terms of cost of labor than these other economies that we're taking a look at. And we also have a very competitive benefits plan in the United States. All of this bodes very well for us. We are told by the economists that in 2015, our economy will grow by 3.2%. That's about a 50% increase over 2014. We are the strongest economy in the world. We have sub-6% unemployment, national average. We have growing corporate profits. We are the energy cost leader. There are two things that I want to spend just a minute talking to you about. And first of all, let me applaud this council for what you folks have done to create product over the years. The way we get folks to look at a community is to have something to show them, and that's buildings that are sitting there that they can buy, outfit, and move into very quickly. And the other thing is sites. Last year, we had some 55 folks come in here looking for buildings, and they broke out, about 32 of those, quite frankly, were looking for 50,000 to 100,000 square foot buildings. And then you had 14 that were higher than 100,000 square feet and six that were below 20. So folks are still coming, looking for buildings, and it's important that we have a building. Your spec building has gotten a tremendous number of looks, and it continues to get a tremendous number of looks, and it continues to get submitted on projects. We send those kind of specifications in here. The other thing that is coming back is greenfield sites. And by that I mean a big piece of, of land, that a company will come, no building will suit what they're trying to do, it's too specialized. So they're looking for a big piece of land where they can make an investment, a strategic investment that'll last for the next 30 years. And we are seeing that return. That, that went down some during the recession, folks were in here trying to get buildings. But the greenfield sites are back, the parks are back, the way the decision Beaumont made to build greenfield in the park out there is huge. And we're gonna continue to see those kinds of things. It continues to be for us both a privilege and an honor to represent this county in your economic development efforts. We've been successful together. I feel very strong about this year. I feel even stronger about the next decade. And I think what we've really got to do is continue to focus on product development. We gotta have buildings, we gotta have sites, and workforce development. And there are a lot of folks out there involved in workforce development. We've got to be vigilant, and we've got to continue to remain competitive in workforce. I'm glad to try and answer any questions you may have, or tell you I can, or whatever the case may be. Thank you all for your continued support and for what you do for this county to, to create the opportunity for us to break those.
We thank you and your team for what you do for us, have done for us, and will do for us. And the other day, I was talking to someone, and they said, "If we wanted to start today to have a new area ready for people to come and look, by the time you did purchase the land, did due diligence, get water and sewer to it, it's a minimum of two and a half years." So you have to constantly have a vision so that you can look forward to trying to continue to grow this county. And that's a goal of our council right now, is to continue to try to grow this county. So thank you for being a partner and, and working with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we applaud that effort on your part, and you're exactly right. I've always said it's three years. To have product is great, that's a good thing. The bad thing is, if you put it out there, it's gonna get sold, and then you've got to start over again. And it's a three-year window, while people are going somewhere else. Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank y'all. It's public comment time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have tonight Ms. Lisa Brandonberg, Mr. Wayne Mixon, and Mr. Clarence Polling, all who desire to speak on the quarry.
Good evening, Lisa Brandonberg, District 7. One item that pertains to the quarry, we would like to know why the pavement at Rockton Threwway keeps climbing up the priority list. We were in 2012 like in the 80s, and now we way down, almost number one on the list. Nothing's changed with the landowners, and won't that road paved?
create the opportunity for us to break through.
We thank you and your team for what you do for us, have done for us, and will do for us. And the other day, I was talking to someone, and they said, if we wanted to start today to have a new area ready for people to come and look, by the time you did purchase the land, did due diligence, get water and sewer to it, it's a minimum of two and a half years. So you have to constantly have a vision so that you can look forward to trying to continue to grow this county. And that's a goal of our council right now, is to continue to try to grow this county. So thank you for being a partner and, and working with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we applaud that effort on your part, and you're exactly right. I've always said it's three years. To have product is great. That's a good thing. The bad thing is, if you put it out there, it's going to get sold, and then you've got to start over again. And it's a three-year window. A lot of people are going somewhere else. So, thank you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. It's public comment time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have tonight Ms. Lisa Brandonberg, Mr. Wayne Mixon, and Mr. Clarence Pollan, all who desire to speak on the quarry.
Good evening, Lisa Brandonberg, District 7. One item that pertains to the quarry, we would like to know why the pavement at Rockton Threwway keeps climbing up the priority list. We were in 2012 like in the 80s, and now we way down, almost number one on the list. Nothing's changed with the landowners, and won't that road paved? We hadn't made any requests or anything, and regardless of the reason, it's won't change the definition that it's still a minor rate. But my main message tonight, the quarry, Winsboro Crest Down, DEHAC did issue them an air permit. And what that means is that one-third of every pound of dust that's produced by a granite quarry is carcinogens, meaning cancer-causing. And that's acceptable by our federal government. So they got that air permit. And it also is stated in the permit that has been issued that fugitive dust must be suppressed by water. Yet, the quarry has not followed up with the town of Winsboro to receive water. Our concerned citizens group want to thank everyone on council for what you've already done to help us, but we would like for you to inform us of the procedures that will be used should DEHAC grant the second permit needed by the quarry to operate. How will you make sure that all of our questions have been answered and that the land ordinance has been enforced? And I want to thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, Madam Chair. My name is Wayne Mixon. I live in Augusta, Georgia. So you're probably saying, what are you doing here? You'll find out in a minute. I'm simply reading comments that my wife wrote. She's much smarter and a lot better-looking than I am. We understand how many times your job, speaking to the council, your job must feel like being caught between a rock and a hard place. And we appreciate the many hours of dedication you've given to making Fairfield County the best it can be. Also, we appreciate your expressing the surrounding quarry property owners' concerns, excuse me, and questions to DEHAC and quarry executives. However, answers and expressions of attempts to solve environmental problems like air and water pollution, damages to surrounding structures due to explosions, and health issues of human beings, wildlife, and plant life caused by quarry activity are not the same thing as assurances to property owners that if their properties are compromised, they will be compensated by the quarry owners. That's what I, speaking for my wife, that's what I want, who is a Fairfield County property owner, okay? That's what I want and what I think other property owners want, compensation if we're compromised. If the shoe were on the quarry owners' and executives' foot rather than property owners', they would want the same thing. Property owners understand industry is vital to any community, and if this is the emphasis of Fairfield County and its council, then the property owners are caught between a rock and a hard place. And we feel abandoned. Not only is the council responsible for encouraging industry, but it's also responsible for protecting its landowners, their health, welfare, plant and wildlife of the county, and the natural resources. The landowners will do whatever is in their power to get assurances from the owners and executives of the quarry that if our properties are compromised, we will be compensated. Because any right-thinking person would want the same thing, including the quarry owners. They're
Good evening. I'm Clarence Pollan. I live in District 7. It has actually made me physically sick thinking about what's going on with my area. And I don't feel like anything is being done to protect us. Actually, I don't feel like anything being done to protect our constitution or our civil rights. Now, that's a subject I never wanted to bring up before, because I didn't want to be portrayed as an angry black man. But then I took a look in the mirror and realized that I have white people in my family, so I can't be thought of like them. But this is not right. Y'all belong to us. Y'all don't belong to the Rock Quarry. Y'all belong to us. Y'all were assigned to us to protect us from the outsiders that we don't need to have here. The gentleman who was just up here, speaking of industries coming to our town, he was saying that we have 10 other places that's looking at us, that's going to bring industries to this town, 64,000 jobs, something like that. We don't need this Rock Quarry. We really don't. I don't feel right about it. I'm sure no one out here does feel right about it. The young ladies who are just up here in front of us, they're going to go off, they're going to go to college, hopefully get good jobs, and become something big in life. Hopefully, they'll want to come back and invest in the place that brought them thus far. But who wants to come back to a big hole in the earth? I wouldn't. There'd be no need. Our granite has built the Washington Monument, the Lincoln Monument. All this stuff is up in Washington. We're on the map. We're in museums. And I didn't want to take the same granite and put it on a road on a crush run? I think it ought to be honored a little more than that. This is our town, ladies and gentlemen. Y'all don't live where the Rock Quarry people live. Y'all not from there. Y'all from here. And I'd like to remind y'all, y'all have every right in the whole world to veto them. Y'all don't have to let them in. That's the job. I know it'd be nice to have another industry here, but let's bring an industry in that people can actually agree on. It's not going to kill us in the end. I've already went through one kidney transplant. Don't want to go through a lung transplant. That wasn't fun for me. I don't want anyone in here to have to go through anything I went through, because I wouldn't wish it on my worst enemy. We need y'all help. No matter what they decide to do, whether they decide to give them these permits, now I know y'all gave them one, we need y'all to stop them. Y'all our last hope. And make sure, whatever you decide, make sure you can sleep with that. Make sure when it comes to full judgment day, you can answer for that. Thank you.
No applauding tonight, please.
Mr. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. I only have a few minutes, and I'm unable to go over my entire, the entire text of my essay I forwarded saying to Mr. Roof and Cheryl Brown, for those who are interested. Today's budget process affords us an excellent opportunity to structure our budget around an efficient and effective government for the first time in a long time. An efficient and effective government that allocates resources based upon citizens' needs first, not stuck behind feeding a government beast that has wasted too much money in the past decade. I submit the following suggestions, which will help to put the county on a meaningful budget process. First, cease all defeatist and downright false attitudes, such as you have to cut services to reduce spending. That's a falsehood. Or the bidding process raises costs. In what universe? Not this one. And we can always issue more debt. That's got to stop, that attitude. Thinking you can run more efficient, thinking you cannot run more efficiently only results in more taxes and less services. Rather, budget participants should demand a "we can do better" attitude from all other budget participants. The citizens certainly deserve that attitude. Stakeholder involvement is critical for the budget. Optimize resource allocations to those goals by empowering the government team to find ways to reduce spending by a modest 5 percent while improving services. Every organization on the planet's been doing that for a long time. Provide the public with quarterly updates. Budget bonus incentives to associates for achieving total county operation savings in excess of 5 percent. Look for ways, revenue to raise taxes. Building sports complexes will benefit both recreational needs for the citizens and raise revenues. Many counties across the state are doing that. Thank you. Benchmark all costly and inflexible full-time and part-time ratios, and make appropriate adjustments as attrition allows. I'm not asking for layoffs, never. Initiate a hiring freeze, however, in which only council can override for emergencies. Create a, an actual organizational chart that you can discern where needs and...
That concludes segment number one. We do not have a public hearing tonight. We have third and final reading on Ordinance 648. Ms. Brown, will you post that?
Yes, ma'am. Authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing the I-77 corridor regional industrial park by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Fairfield County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park, to include certain real property located in Richland County, 3130 Bluff Road LLC, and other related matters.
Do we have a motion?
No.
So have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. You had in your package for this week, the board minutes from Chamber of Commerce and Board of Disabilities and Special Needs. And now, number 10 is our board and commission appointments. And this week, we've had some discussion about these various appointments. Therefore, I am going to put the consideration of boards and appointments in the administration committee, and we'll bring back some recommendations, hopefully at the next council meeting. Before you, you have the various appointments that have been recommended. Mr. Robinson, do you have a comment?
Just when you get to the disabilities and special needs, I have to excuse myself because of context.
Okay. Well, would you dismiss yourself because we're going to do that one first? He has signed the appropriate form that says he has a conflict of interest in regard to this. So we have two persons, one for representing District 7, and one for representing District 1. Do I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that the representative here, or the appointee from District 7, is Ms. Callie Bell. She came, or I was, she was brought to my attention by the board, and she has worked with them before, and I think she would make a good appointment to the board. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, so those two are appointed, and we'll hold the names of those elected until the end. Okay, if you'll have Mr. Robinson come back in, please. Next, we have an appointment for reappointment for District 3 to the Aeronautics Commission. Do I have a motion? So move. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose likewise. We have three reappointments to Behavioral Health Services. Do I have a motion? So move.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two reappointments to Council on Aging. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have one reappointment at large to the Fairfield Memorial Hospital. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have one reappointment from District 1 for the Library Commission. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that would end our appointments. Ms. Brown, would you post those?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Marshirel?
I think one of the council members I had mentioned, when we have individuals that apply to these boards and commissions, I don't know that everybody sees their applications or what they bring to the process. I don't know if I've read any of these applications, but as a thought, that might, I thought that was a good suggestion, that at least we all get a chance to view what that person brings to that position.
That is something that the administration finance will discuss when the committee is doing that night. But thank you for your thought.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council, and for the public. The members appointed to the Disabilities and Special Needs Board tonight, Mrs. Callie S. Bell, representing District 7, Ms. Phyllis Gutierrez, District 1. The reappointments tonight from the Aeronautics Commission, Mr. Tony Price, representing District 3. To the Behavioral Health Services Board, Mr. Eugene Clemmons, representing District 2, Mr. Brian Bonds, at large, seat, Mrs. M. Kate Boware, at large. To the Council on Aging Board, Mr. George Thames, at large, Mrs. Carolyn Clemmons, at large. To the Fairfield Memorial Hospital Board, Mrs. Catherine Fantry, at large, position. To the Library Commission, Mr. James Bubba Lyles, representing District 1.
We have old business before us, and you've had in your package this weekend the county council bylaws and a few minor changes to that. Any, do I have a motion to accept the changes?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we vote on these one by one, so that we can discuss them one by one. I'm not comfortable with all these, and I would like to discuss them for a minute.
All right. The first one is, and number two is to change chairman to county administrator. The reason for that is because we do not have a chairman after December 31st midnight every year. So in order to have the inaugural committee and the meeting, we need to have the administrator to call that meeting to order. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I can't support this. I don't, I'm not in favor of any county administrator or someone who is employed by the council to run a public meeting of the council. I think that should be a public official who handles that, whether it be the previous chairman, or it be, as we did this year, the senior member of the council. So I just want to make that known. I would prefer that we do this a different way and not be so hasty in doing this, as we certainly have a little bit of time before we have to do it again. But if that's what you guys would like to do, then that's the way we'll do it. But I just wanted to make that known.
The senior member of council did not do that this year. It was the administrator, because at that point, we do not have a seating of council.
Right.
And they cannot perform those duties at that time. So that's why we had the administrator to call it together in order that all of the new members can be sworn in and acknowledged, and any who are re-elected at that time are also sworn in. So that's just to have, that's the swearing-in ceremony for the new elected council members.
Madam Chair, I actually meant to say that under the next one, but still, I think that applies to both. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the changes on number two?
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
Aye.
All right. Number three is the same situation for the calling of the inaugural. Mr. Marshirel?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. If we follow any other procedures, we cannot start that meeting and elect ourselves.
Correct.
And that's what I just heard you said.
That's all right.
You know, so it defeats the purpose. We need someone in official capacity to, to carry that function out, to put us in office, and then we immediately take over. It's not that administrator, just as soon as that function is ended, council conducts business as normal.
That's correct. And this is the first year in a long time we have not had a carryover chair. However, that chair was no longer chair as of the stroke of midnight on December 31st. The next one is the organization- The next one is the organizational election of chair and vice chair. There again, you do not have an officer who is in a position with the council to run the meeting, and it spells out how we go about electing chair and vice chair. As soon as that chair and vice chair are elected, then that chair takes over and runs the meeting. This is just a formality in order to have someone who can handle that. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
Same.
Okay, standing committees, number four, Economic Development Committee. In the past and for many years, the chair has always made the appointments not only for this committee, but for every committee. So that's just being stricken as to who would serve on that committee. Do I have a motion? I so move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose likewise. The next part is, further down is page 5 of 20, and items 3 and 4 are stricken, and the reason being is they are a complete duplication of 1 and 2. It was just an error where those two were picked up and given the number 3 and 4. Do I have a motion to delete those?
So move, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose likewise. And let's see, the next one.
That was it?
Okay. Go back to 5. The clerk says under D. Agendas, we corrected the names of the two new committees, so that they are Public Affairs and Policy and Public Services and Development Committees. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, yeah, all right, you so moved. Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, then on page 7 and 8, number 12, if you have a conflict, this is basically stating you will sign a document such as Mr. Robinson did tonight so that it is of record. Motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose likewise. And then, on page 17, election and appointments to boards and commissions. Item 2, it had been in our record in minutes prior that the council would appoint the delegates to the Central Midlands Council of Government, which we know as COG, the Central South Carolina Alliance that we had here tonight, and now we're also adding the I-77 Alliance. Those, public would mean actually council members, and those are basically set up by those boards to be the chair of the council. So that's why we put it in. However, it's unwritten, but it's not in here, in that we appoint private members to those boards, not the COG. Well, we do to the COG as well, but this council does elect those members as well to the private sector. And so, I'd like a motion to strike and put the chair shall appoint the public, meaning the council delegate, to those three boards. I so move.
I'd second.
The council delegate, which is spelled out in those bylaws of those three organizations.
Madam Chair, I didn't hear a second, so I'll make a motion for this language to say the chairman shall serve as the public delegate, not appoint.
And, all right. All right, then, do I have a second to that?
Second.
I think you had a second to the first one.
Oh, you, we did have a second? All right.
Motion to amend?
No. Okay, hold on a second. So we have a motion and a second. All right, so motion to amend now.
Motion to amend and strike, shall appoint, and insert, the chairman shall serve as the public delegate.
Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion?
Madam Chair, I think with those appointments, when you mentioned it, I'm not, I don't know if I recall altogether, but I thought there was like anywhere from three to five categories, when you say we elect people to those boards, or it's like from the business community or someone, a citizen, that's involved with certain various things, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And council elects the business private sector to those boards.
Right. Just wanted to be clear about that.
All right, so we amended to say the chairman shall serve as the public delegate to those three organizations. All in favor?
Aye.
So then, then the full motion, all in favor to carry the full motion then, where it has been amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. All right, so that would finish up all of those. Okay, the next is no knee business and county administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, county council, good evening, citizens of Fairfield County. Madam Chair, I just have a few items that I would like to bring to your attention. The first item is letter A, is regarding Winsburg Crestone LLC. You've already heard some information about that matter. One of the things what our staff has done, we have actually placed on our website information we received from DEHAC regarding the responses to the letter that we had forwarded to DEHAC regarding what we thought were unanswered questions from the public hearings that DEHAC scheduled here. That information is actually on the website, our website, and also tomorrow, we'll also post the air permit matter itself. Please keep in mind that there are two permits that were pending, of course, they've issued the air permit, but the intent-to-mine application has not yet been permitted at this time. We have a timeline or a clock in order to appeal, and that is something that I would ask, under the executive session portion, which we had, the pending litigation, and it was, I guess, a mistake on my part, but we have the pending litigation and potential litigation to give an update on that, because we did have a communication from our attorney that we had retained regarding that, to be able to provide some legal update information to the council on that matter. So we are trying to get the best and latest information from them regarding that. The county, however, has not received any information from Winsburg Crestone Principal, the company itself. If you recall, before the company, even if DEHAC were to issue both permits, they still would have to submit documentation to the county with a land development permit and all other things, of course, and then from a local zoning matter, the county would have to approve several things in order for any operation to occur. So, nothing to this point has actually been officially submitted to the county, actually from the company itself, and of course, they can't do that until, of course, they get final authorization from DEHAC or through that appeals process. The next item is a budget update. Staff is actually, we're probably halfway through, we have been meeting with all county and principal departments, we're also meeting with outside agencies regarding their request. From our budget meeting, what the county council had directed the administrator to do was to bring back a responsible budget. That and my discussion with the council meant, what the staff's goal was, was to bring back, of course, again, a no-tax increase budget based upon those things, what we're attempting to do. We have still yet to receive our final numbers from the state of South Carolina regarding two major items. That's what our CPI and growth factors will be. And the second, which is a very important item as well, is knowing what our local government fund revenue will be. Of course, that is a very hot-button topic at our general assembly now regarding the funding level of local governments throughout the state of South Carolina, regarding whether or not they will fully fund us. I doubt if there will be any repayment of past shortfalls. I doubt that very seriously, and I think the best thing that we could expect would be to fully fund the formula for this year. However, just to give you an idea of what that means, in our budget itself, that's over $800,000 of revenue, so that's a substantial amount of revenue for our budget. One additional thing that I would like to do is ask Mr. Randy Roberts, our assessor, to come up to give council just a brief overview, of course. We're in a reassessment year, and of course, his office has been, and I think this is an understatement, but tremendously busy with receiving telephone calls, and we just wanted to just give the council an update on what has transpired thus far.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Appreciate the opportunity to come out and speak to council, the taxpayers of Fairfield County. He said to put together a brief presentation and consider the heat. I'm glad it was brief, so it's not a whole lot of pages, but I'll try to take my time and go over it very well. The first page is pretty much self-explanatory to the new council people, Randy Roberts, the assessor, in case you didn't know that. Okay, a lot of people ask when they call in about their assessment notices, how often does a reassessment happen? It happens every five years, every county, not, of course, on the same schedule. The schedule is staggered, but every five years, we're required to go out, reappraise all the property. It's not required that you go out to every property, but we like to go out there to make sure the improvement is still there, especially with mobile homes, those tend to disappear sometimes in between a five-year cycle. And as you also can see, there's more than one county going through a reassessment, Barnwell, Charleston, Chester, Georgetown, Langston, Lee, Lexington, and McCormick, to name a Getting started, of course, I started February 25th, 2013. So the first thing you got to do was come up with a plan of attack. We divided the county into two areas, went out in two groups of two. Don Bonds is my deputy assessor, he and I teamed up. Jeff Brewerton and Gary Hensley were the other team of two. Drove by every property that had access. Of course, there's some properties you can't get into, and so, of course, we sent a letter, they had a gate requesting permission to go in. Not that we have to, but we just like to let people know what we're doing out there so nobody's suspicious of any activities that we're conducting. And of course, there are gates a lot, like I said, we sent the letters, and most people were very friendly, very welcoming. Of course, there were a few that asked us to leave, and we respected their rights and wishes, and we left. Took us roughly a year and a half to complete the process. And then, once you complete all the reevaluation of all the property setting, the values, looking at the land values, looking at the improvements, then you have to submit that for approval to the South Carolina Department of Revenue, and our reassessment program was approved January 26, 2015, by Mr. Bill Paradise. Assessment notices, we mailed out about 18,407 notices, mailed on Monday, February 23, 2015. And the most important thing to remember is you have 90 days from the date of that notice to appeal if you have, you know, a problem with the value. Seventy-two notices were returned regarding mailing address. Of course, we corrected those, reset those out. How does this affect the values? Of course, 8,426 stayed the same, 6,785 went down, 3,196 went up. The ones that went up, new construction improvements that we discovered during our reassessment, and of course, the cap. If a property is capped, let's say, for example, all the neighboring properties that are 150, and the person, let's just say, in the center of the subdivision has a value of 100,000, and even though his value may be 150, he can only go up 15% every five years, so he will still be 115 in increment every five years at 15%. How does this affect the assessor's office? Roughly 350 calls, roughly 175 office visits. Most of the questions have been, is this a bill? What does this mean? How much are my taxes going to be? Most of the comments have been positive. And like I said, I made it very brief and to the point, and I would like to recognize all the employees of the assessor's office that worked very hard to make this happen, Laura Bunning, Don Bonds, Jeff Brewerton, and Gary Hensley, and I left off Jim Thompson, he worked with us part-time, and he was very beneficial to the office, just answering questions, answering phone calls. And of course, if someone has a question about their assessment notice, please give us a call. We'd be glad to go over it with you like we have with everyone else. And if you didn't receive one, please call us, but everyone should have received one. Like I said, if you didn't, give us a call.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I could, Mr. Roberts, could you go back to the slide with the breakdown?
Sure.
Yes, sir. Probably, Madam Chair and council, if there's probably nothing else you take away, this is the one slide that I would like for everyone to remember. The state statute requires, or it holds us to the fact, county governments cannot receive a windfall for reassessment. I'm remembering past years, for those of us who've been around a while in this, of course, before the law changed, it has not always been this way. But local governments cannot receive a windfall during the reassessment year. There are properties, of course, that the values change to go up, down, and what have you, but the county government itself does not receive a windfall during the reassessment process. And so, that's one of the things, of course, that the folks who oversee us as Department of Revenue make sure, and some of that information is looked at in the certification process when Mr. Roberts sends that information to DOR. And of course, every citizen has a right to question or challenge during that 90-day appeal process for whatever reason, but of course, it has to be done during that process. But of course, there will be some properties that do go up without question, but there are also, and of course, you never hear about those, the properties that actually go down, even though I think this year, we actually had someone-
Even on, I had two people call, and the claims that went down.
Yeah, who were, they were concerned about that they went down, so I mean, that was a new one for me, but-
Can't please everybody.
We had two of those as well. But that's just the one thing that I wanted to point out, and of course, just point that out. Mr. Roberts can answer any questions that you have.
Any other comments to Mr. Smith?
Madam Chair, I don't know that it's relevant, but when I saw that you had went through some properties, you weren't able to access them, or that you sent them letters, I just want to, just, you weren't here, but several years ago, I had mentioned, in the last 10 years, we had a lot of property in Fairfield County where people put up gates. And I've looked at these gates, and our ambulance and fire trucks cannot go through those gates, and counties should not be held responsible for any damage on the other side of those gates or be sued, because you can't get through there unless you tear it down. I just, I don't know if y'all have anything to do with that, but we need to be mindful of that. Just wanted to comment on that.
Smith has a comment.
Mr. Roberts, appreciate your presentation, and also would like to get a copy of that at some point, if that could be forwarded to us. And if anybody in the audience is interested that's from District 7, I needed appointee to the Assessment Appeals Board.
Yes.
So if you'd like to join in that fight, then let me know, I'd be glad to put you in.
And I was going to comment on that, and the clerk just handed me, we need appointees from District 1, 6, and 7, because I'm sure it will be used in 90 days.
We already have.
It will be used in 90 days, so please make your appointments so we can get those appointed before the 90 days are up.
Madam Chairman, if you can hear me, I'm hoarse, but anyway. We have somebody committed, he hadn't turned his paperwork yet.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Roberts, I've had several people to call and ask me, is it possible on the phone to you put what the value was the previous time we did reassessment, so they can look at that?
We can, but we do have it on the website, and that is something we thought about doing. But I'll say this, we had some complications extracting that file, getting it to the printers, and so we didn't want to delay that 90-day window so we can get some good figures back to council when they set the military and different things, so we just try not to delay it any further. But I agree, that would be a very nice tool to have, so you can- But I agree, that would be a very nice tool to have, so you can see it. Because most people call and ask that question, what was it last year?
Thank you, sir.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few other things. Thank you, Randy. On House Bill 3374, which is the local government fund, that's what I was talking about before, don't want to speak about that infinitem, but we have, or our staff has, we've actually forwarded our positions, which are led by our Association of Counties, but we have forwarded that information to members of our delegation, asking for their support with amendments that are favorable to the county's position, and I would think, of course, to the citizens' position, because the more money that we receive statutorily, that allows us to be able to pay for the goods and services that we need at the county, therefore, not having to use millage in order to do those things. So it's tremendously important that we receive the statutory amount for the local government funding, and that's what we're expecting, and that's what we're working toward. But that information has been sent to every, both of the members of our delegation, and, of course, the chair and the vice chair are copied on all those communications.
I spoke, had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Douglas early last week, and she said she had already attached her name to the amendment that was most favorable to us, and that's where the bill is right now and has to go through the House before it can ever get to the Senate. So she is working diligently to help us on that.
And Madam Chair, just my last thing, what I was mentioning, on the executive session under the pending litigation, I would just respectfully request that we just add to that potential litigation as well, and that will allow us to discuss a potential litigation matter as well.
Motion to amend?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay. Motion to amend pending litigation and add potential litigation. All in favor? opposed likewise.
Madam Chair, the next item under my report, and I think, well, actually, probably several council members, I think, have been contacted regarding some questions regarding noise, ordinance, restrictions, regulations. We've had some incidents that have occurred, and I think, probably, I guess, historically, this has been kind of an issue that's been out there. The sheriff himself, I think, he's been contacted, his office has been contacted. We've been looking at some reciprocal ordinances that are out there. I think if council is agreeable, Madam Chair, this is an item that I believe that you want to send to a committee for additional study where our staff can research this further and work with sheriff's department to bring back recommendations.
Yes, sir, and assign that to the Public Affairs and Policy Committee, and I will be providing to the chair, Ms. Kinley, all of the information I have received, and if anyone else has received information, please do so, so they can have everything available at that time. And for those who are interested, of course, it will be posted 24 hours in advance of the committee meeting so you can attend. Thank you.
I also would like to add, I had looked into this a little bit and printed something out on it, and I don't know where it's at in my stack here, but I know you all have a copy of it. I asked Ms. Brown if she would copy that and hand it out. Just gives a little bit more information about noise ordinances in other places, and has a comparison chart of decibel levels and things like that, just to give you more of an idea of how those things, I guess, affect hearing.
I'm reminded that we need a formal motion to put that into the Public Affairs and Policy Committee.
Motion to refer to the Public Affairs and Policy Committee?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we had a motion, we had a motion and a second, and all the ayes. Six ayes. All right. Okay, clerk to council's report. All right, second.
We have three individuals to speak tonight. First, Mr. Val Green on the Seafund paving, followed by Ms. Faye Sandow on the sidewalk project in Jenkinsville, and Mr. Randy Bright with Healthy Solutions.
Madam Chair, members of council, my name is Al Green. I live at downtown Salem Crossroads, which is District 3, and I'd like to talk to you about the 2013 and 2015 paving program, Seafund paving program, as you know, yes. And I'm going to read it, because I'll digress if I don't. And there's also a letter I sent Mr. Pope earlier, which is, I'll say something, just a minute. In the last three years, I have witnessed the above-county program go through a total mismatch of illegal and technically incorrect construction procedures for road paving activities. All of this has taken place without the public being informed of the progress of the program. In 2013 and 14, the county paid out over $2.2 million to contractors on a county-hired paving consultant. The technical basis for this program is predicated on County Ordinance 616, and that money comes from South Carolina Department of Transportation. This ordinance is extremely technically flawed and needs to be rewritten before any more money is spent on another bad paving season. You can postpone using these funds for up to three years and not lose any of the funding. Please consider voting to put this program on hold until we can accomplish this in a way that will have long-lasting benefits for Fairfield County. If you continue into the 2015 season with this rate and allow the previous contract to be let, you'll be pouring another $1 million down a rat hole. Fairfield County citizens voted you into office to put a stop to these pathways of doing business with public money. I would ask you to please do your duty. Thank you. Now, I would want to say something to Mr. Pope. I need to give him a little bit of apology, because this morning, the first time I read that the contract 2015 had been sent out and bids had been received, and I was a little hot under the collar. So the letter, which you've got a copy of, is a little too harsh, Mr. Pope. I didn't mean to be quite so harsh. I was just frustrated by the whole thing, so.
I didn't take it that way.
Okay, thank you.
I'm thick-skinned.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please address that.
There is just one thing that I think that, you know, sometimes we don't get this opportunity to kind of clarify things, to make sure that the public clearly understands. The CTC program itself is, there's a partnership between the county and the County Transportation Commission, that's what the CTC stands for. The CTC is actually, all of their members are appointed by the legislative delegation. That's who appoints those folks. They make the final decision regarding road paving in the county. Now, the county, and we've had several issues as of late that have occurred with them, that we've asked for additional input and would like to sit down with them. However, the CTC makes those decisions. So the CTC is a public body, just like we are a public body. If there are issues with posting of meetings or things of that nature, then the CTC needs to take those matters up. However, the county's process is totally transparent regarding all of the monies that we receive. I know in the past, at least, I think, historically, the way that the program is worked, every time there's a meeting, of course, when the council is actually notified of meetings, we actually post that on the board here, and as a part of our process, what we do out of courtesy for them. So the posting is actually their responsibility. But these are the monies, and our part in this is, the county council actually adopted the new road criteria for, the criteria for the ranking of primarily the paving of dirt roads throughout the county. I think probably prior to 2013, that was an old criteria that has been updated over time, so now we're presently under a new criteria that went into effect in 2013. So it's that ordinance that the CTC uses as a guide to appropriate monies and to do the dirt road paving, based upon approximately a million dollars of funds that are received each and every year. That's the way that the roads are actually paved. 75% of that are used primarily, or generally, for county projects. 25% are used for state DOT projects. So that is the way that that process works. So when people talk about the county, yes, we have a partnership in that, but that is totally, the entity that's in total control of that is actually the CTC that's outside of the control of the county. Thank you.
Also, part of that partnership has to do with the fact that we pay part of the study to update those road qualifications every five or so years. And the criteria changes because you either have more homes, another school, various things like that, and so that is how, your road may have been near the top, but something else came in front of it now because it met the new criteria, and it changes. They literally try to work all the way down that schedule every time the paving program comes up. They have already notified all of the water companies three years in advance that there may be a problem with the road, like a water line may be in the middle of the road, it may be on the property line, that sort of thing, which gives the water companies at least two to three years to get that corrected so they can move forward with the paving program. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I just thought about one other thing. I know a member of the public kind of commented on Rocketting Throughway and where it was on the paving list. I could just say unequivocally from my office, once we, this ordinance was passed, the criteria itself is evaluated by the CTC, and that's the way that they appropriate the roads, and then the funding gets cut off there. There have been absolutely no special meetings or discussions about Rocketting Throughway, and so where it is on the list is where it is on the list based upon that evaluation, but there have been absolutely no communication, and I haven't asked Mr. Anderson this, but no communication with us about that. We received the list, and it's supposed to be, of course, according to the criteria that we passed for the updated list. So there have been no other special meetings or special consideration or discussions about that road in general. We just receive all of them based upon the amount and level of funding that we have. But you also know, from my recommendation to you, and that I made to the CTC at the last meeting that they had, I do think that the council needs to have as much involvement in that process as possible, because I think the council, in representing all of the districts and all of the citizens across the county's elected officials, should have, say, in the most efficient use of those funds. And as we, as a county grows, there may be different needs to what we have as to, you know, what's been done in the past. So, you know, we do want to, and actually, I think some of the members did agree to that, that we do need to have a meeting with them prospectively about how we move forward as that, as those funds are, have come to us.
As those meetings are posted, I try to attend those just to see what the CTC is doing. If they ask for questions of us, we answer those, but ultimately, they make those decisions as to the roads by going straight down the list. Mr. Smith?
I'll hold my concerns until council time.
All right. Anything further? All right. Ms. Sandow?
Madam Chair, I'm Faye Sandow, I'm council. I'm Faye Sandow. I live at 330 Shantore Road in District 4. I was unable to speak at the last council meeting, during which I would have expressed my concerns about the county funding a portion of a sidewalk in Jenkinsville. Excuse me, even though in an article in the February 27th edition of the Independent Voice indicated that the council approved the funds, I would like to express my concerns tonight. A $50,000 hit against the county budget isn't anything to sneeze at, and I hope the council members who voted for this sidewalk extension drove out to Jenkinsville to see what you've approved. In case you didn't or weren't able to make it, I took a few pictures I'd like to share with you. I'll give this to Ms. Brown to pass around. As you can see, the proposed extension would be along the rural part of 215. By my car odometer, I measured the distance from the end of the current sidewalk to the county recreation park. The distance is six tenths of a mile. In that distance, I counted only five houses that will face the sidewalk. The majority of the extension is front of woods, not in front of or leading two homes, a library, a post office, a church, a fire station, a convenience store, or even a gas station. There's not even a hint of a footpath, which would indicate residents actually walk along the route. From the pictures of the current sidewalk, you can see areas covered in pine straw and pine cones, indicating the current sidewalk is not used and is certainly not maintained by the town of Jenkinsville. So the question begs to be asked, why agree to spend $50,000 for a sidewalk that in all probability will not be used and basically leads to only one destination? There are many areas within the county that could benefit from financial support, especially projects that could bring jobs and industry to Fairfield. Projects that would aid in lowering ISO fire ratings are projects that could aid our ailing hospital. But the taxpayers, including all of you, are now going to spend $50,000 on something so few people benefit from. The Independent Voice had a quote from a council member stating that of the over 700 registered voters in the small Jenkinsville community, and I quote, "I guarantee you 50% of those voters are almost within walking distance of the park and the proposed sidewalk." Almost does not warrant $50,000 from our budget. So, Madam Chair, if there's any possibility of reconsideration, I respectfully ask that you lead council in working with Mr. Pope to redo this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy Bright?
This is the abbreviated version of the speech I was going to give at the previous council meeting, but I think you'll still get the point. I'm not emailing out the full text of this. I'm very confident that council does get the point, but certainly bears repeating. One other clarification, I want to be sure that everyone understands that in all my speeches, I speak for no one but myself. I don't represent any organization or any group, just myself. I've been here up at this podium a time or two before. It's never changed, never will. Oh, my God, he's still going to do this. To the point. The sign, "No Community Wants," posted on the front of the hospital reads thusly, "This facility is closed. If you have an emergency, please call 911." Soon after that sign goes up in rural communities, other consequential signs follow. Health outcomes decline. Economic growth vanishes, and quality of life plummets. And if you think that we are going to be able to take advantage of all the economic growth that this gentleman who made a presentation earlier predicted, we can't do it without a viable hospital. I think everyone understands that. And I would like to thank Fairfield County Council and Fairfield community for its wise support of Fairfield Memorial Hospital in these trying times. To be sure, all across America, critical access in rural hospitals have been pushed to the edge, and many, 475 in the last 25 years, have been pushed over the edge, gone forever. But don't realize solely in my perspective, University of North Carolina professor Mark Holmes studied the economic impact of 150 rural hospital closings. He found, three years out, losing a hospital costs a community, on average, 1.6 percentage points in unemployment and about $1,000 in per capita income. If applied to a scenario of Fairfield County, losing its hospital, this study would predict an economic loss of $24 million. It's an investment all of us need. Kaiser Health News, ER closures raise death rates at nearby hospitals. In other words, people traveling too far for economic care, for emergency care, have diminished survival rates.